Alright, welcome. Sorry it's a little chilly in here, but you had what ninety to ninety-three weather days and I'm sure that right now it would be as cold in here. So, welcome to our August board meeting. Hard to believe, twelve days we open school.
Twelve?
Sixteen.
Yes. So September fifth is first day of school for students. September fourth is first day for staff. Although, we can't really say it's first day because I've been walking around the buildings that our teachers are in, getting the classrooms ready, and everything is starting to come together, so I think I can officially say that 2018-19 school year is pretty much ready to begin. But while our families and our students were enjoying summer vacation, we were hard at work. What did we accomplish? So let me give you some statistics. Our custodial and grounds and maintenance staff cleaned and organized over six hundred and fifty thousand square feet of school buildings and care for a hundred and fifty acres of school grounds, playgrounds, and athletic fields. So, kudos to our custodial and maintenance crew. They've been working hard, and while we were inside the buildings freezing, they were outside, as you can imagine, in that heat, getting that done. Our guidance counselors, child study team members, and secretarial staff prepared over four thousand student schedules and class lists. The administrative team prepared master schedules, conducted numerous interviews to hire outstanding staff, several of whom are in the audience. Prior to this at five o'clock, we had a new staff reception. And then tomorrow and Wednesday, we have new staff orientation. So that's going to be from nine to two on both days. The transportation department prepared one hundred and sixty bus routes and worked hard on getting all of our buses ready. And finally, as I mentioned, when students walk into the classrooms, our teachers have been in the classrooms getting the classrooms ready. So we can't say their teachers have been on vacation the whole time, they've been working hard, so that gets done. So, that's what we've been doing while our families and our students were enjoying summer vacation. So I just want to talk a little bit about what's new for the upcoming school year, and we're really excited about launching our inclusive preschool program pilot. Fifteen students are starting that program, and I know that Principal Nemec, Supervisor O'Neil, the child study team, they've been working hard to ensure a great pilot implementation. So we are ready to go. Our preschool total enrollment, we're at sixty-five, so that is tremendous, and twenty-seven more are sitting off to the side waiting for that process to continue. So in addition to this sixty-five, we could potentially have twenty-seven more, and that's a tremendous number for preschool. Also, very, very happy to report that for the first time in the history of Lacey Township Middle School, we will be implementing a National Junior Honor Society. We completed the application for a chapter, and we are anxiously awaiting acceptance of that. We should be here on any day. And I know that Principal King and Assistant Principal Saboko are working with Mike Ryan, who is going to be transferring to middle school to head the National Junior Honor Society as the advisor. Some really exciting news. And then just the other day, I received an email from Dr. DeVivo, who is our theater drama club teacher, but also the advisor. The fall production is going to be an adaptation of Lisa May Alcott's Little Women, and I know there's been a lot of information out on Facebook. Dr. DeVivo was providing hints as to what the fall play was going to be, and a lot of people were able to guess. And I don't know about you, but it was one of my favorite books growing up, so we're really looking forward to the fall production. And so what else is new in the world of school security? It's been a topic that we've been talking about for quite a long time, and as we've mentioned, and as it's always been, student safety is an important topic for us, and it's a topic that we will continue to discuss in the school year, but in years to come. Certainly, many meetings were held with Chief Devella, who is with us tonight, I'm going to introduce him and S. R. O. May. But many meetings were held with Chief Devella, with members of the Board of Education, with Mr. George and myself, and as I said, thoughtful discussion will be ongoing. But at this time, I don't want to steal this thunder, I would like to introduce Chief Devella and School Resource Officer Detective Charlie May to talk a little bit more, expand a little bit more about what I've just discussed, and maybe outline for all of us what it is that we've accomplished, and I know you have some people to introduce today.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us here tonight. You know, before I start, normally when I speak in public, I'm not nervous, so I'm not stressed out, but Pat DeGeorge gave me ten-minute time.
Five.
Stick to it. So I'm a little worried about that, but no, a serious note, tonight definitely starts a new chapter for, you know, the relationship between the Lacey Township Police Department and the Townschoo Lacey and our school board, and how we look at safety and security of our staff and students moving forward. Before I proceed with that, I feel it's only appropriate to talk about some of the things that we've done over the past couple of years that actually got us to where we are today. In the summer of 2016, I became the chief of police for Lacey Township, pretty much right around the time Dad and Superintendent Greg Wigley began working for the Township of Lacey as well, the school board. And we pretty much knew that we, right away, that we shared the same passion, you know, when it comes to safety and security of our staff and students. And we sat down in multiple meetings to try to see what we can do better together for our community. And we made a list of some things, and all of the top three really priorities on that list were a school resource officer program, a drug and alcoholic education prevention type of program, and also how we can improve active shooter response, not just for the Lacey Township Police Department, but for the Lacey Township School District. So we went ahead, right away, and started working hard. We began looking into the drug and alcohol prevention program. Now, mostly you probably have heard of the DARE program, it's been around for the last ten, twenty, thirty years. For whatever reason, in Lacey Township, we really never had a program like that. Probably not for any particular reasons, different administrations or whatever, but in today's day, especially with this heroin epidemic that's going on, you know, Township and the school board, we felt it was appropriate to get that type of program in our schools. So I researched the LEED program, law enforcement against drugs, similar program to DARE, but also offers social skills for the kids, how to deal with bullying, and some other things. I really liked the program. And we began, our officers began instructing that over at the Mill Pond School, sixth grade, in March of 2017. We did teach that last year as well, the seventeen, eighteen school year, and we are moving forward with that program again this year in the sixth grade. Now I know, at some point, I'd like to bring that program down to the fifth grade, and I also know I want to bring it into our middle school. So, a student will have attended the LEED program, say in fifth or sixth grade, at the elementary level, but then, once they go to intermediate school, they'll receive it again in eighth grade, just prior to going into the high school. Detective May is one of our primary instructors for the LEED program. I'm happy to say, as a senior today, we graduated over three hundred students from the sixth grade at the Mill Pond School with that program. Soon after, the summer of 2017, the Township Lacey and the school board began working very hard on the school resource officer program. Again, not talking bad about anybody, but most districts or municipalities had a SRO in place for the last twenty or thirty years, it's just something, for whatever reason, we didn't have it. Just a priority, just quickly. In the summer of 2017, like I said, we all worked hard together, several meetings, and in September of 2017, we had our first ever school resource officer, standing next to me this evening Detective Charlie May, who was assigned on a full-time basis here in the high school, not just providing safety and security to our students and our staff, but being a friend, helping out with class instruction. Many, he was involved in so many things, I forgot, I almost tracked, but really a very successful year with the SRO program. Moving forward, we talked about a response to active shooter. I don't want to get too much into it for confidentiality and sensitivity reasons, but I'll just say that this past school year, my staff has consisted of Detective Charlie May, Lieutenant Paul Sullivan, unable to be here tonight, and Detective Sam Delisalo, along with several staff here from the Lacey Township School District. We trained over seven hundred staff members here in the school district on what we feel is the appropriate response to an active shooter event if that were to happen. So, three very successful things that we've done in the last two years. I would be remiss if I didn't say that, I think when it comes to safety and security, we've, as a team, have accomplished more in the last two years, probably in the last twenty or thirty years, than when it comes to safety and security. And that's because everybody's standing, sitting up here on the Board of Education, the Township Committee, and then the officers that have here with me this evening. Continuing on, this past summer now, again, looking at ways how we can make the safety and security of our school district even better. And I brought up the topic of Class III Special Law Enforcement Officers. And for those of you that don't know what that means, recently, within the past year or so, there was a law that was passed that allows municipalities such as Lacey Township to hire a recently retired police officer and bring him in and place them in the school district, where they can use, you know, their education and experience that they gained over the coming, in their career. So, this evening, I'd like to introduce three Class III police officers that we hired, but I just want to say that they're in addition to what we already have. So we have Detective Charlie May, who's our full-time school resource officer, the school already employs retired police officers as armed security. So these three new officers that I'll be introducing momentarily, they are in addition to what we have, and I think it's pretty fair to say that the police department and the board of township are continually looking forward into the future, again, to see how we can make this seeking better. So with that, I'd like to call down my three new police officers out there. So these three officers will be patrolling any number of the schools here in our district. First, I'd like to introduce Officer Michael Caputo, let's step forward. Michael Caputo is a thirty-year law enforcement veteran, recently retired as the chief of police for the Tupperton Police Department. He's a firearms instructor, an instructor at the Ocean County Police Academy, and a graduate with the West Point Command and leadership school. He resides here in Lacey Township with his family. Now, when I first learned that Mike had retired, you know, I sought him out and brought him on as a Class II police officer for us back in February, where I signed him to do all of our firearms investigations that we have. You know, he's been doing that for me since February, and probably, I don't know, a week or so after we put out the announcement that we were looking for Class III special police officers, Mike walked into my office and said, hey, you know, listen, you know, I saw that you're looking for a Class III officer, you know, I'm kind of thinking that that might be something that I'm interested, you know, what do you, what do you think about that? And I says, listen, I says, whether you're in headquarters doing firearms investigations or whether you're here in the Lacey Township High School, I know that you're going to, you know, give it a hundred percent, you know, and you've got the job done. And for me, it's a win-win situation, whatever he chose, and he can choose to be in this position. Before I move on to the second officer, I just want to note that since I hired Mike in February, I've dragged him, like I said, or dragged him out with me on a couple of presentations that I had to do, you know, different groups throughout the community, and he would just, you know, he would stand there and he really wouldn't say anything. Somebody had asked me, but why do you bring him to your presentations and stuff? Where else can you have two of the store's police chiefs in the same municipality? So it has been an honor to work with Mike. Again, I think he is going to be a true asset to the police department and the school district as a new board, and thanks, Mike. The second officer I'd like to call forward is Officer Robert Johnson, AKA Bobby Johnson. He also is a twenty-five-year retired law enforcement officer, recently retired from the Ocean County Sheriff's Department, where he spent the majority of his career in the Orange Division, the crime scene unit, as well as the Ocean County Regional SWAT team. He's also a firearms instructor, spent four years in the United States Navy, resides here in Lacey Township with his family, and again, I think he will also be an asset to the school district and the police department. The third officer I'd like to introduce tonight is Officer Rogirio, AKA Roger Santos, also retired, you know, for twenty-five years, recently retired from the Belleville, New Jersey Police Department, and served in there for twenty-one years, and prior to that, he served for the Newark, New Jersey Police Department. He was also a United States Marine, and received an award for an expert white man. He is trilingual, so he can, he's fluent in English, Spanish, and Portuguese, so I'm sure he will definitely be an asset to the school district and the police department. Thank you. All three of these officers will be a true asset to the school district and the police department, and I know that I'm looking forward to working with them as we move forward. And again, before I conclude, I just got to, again, say that I really appreciate all of you sitting up here, the work that we've accomplished over the last two years, President, poor President Claus, Superintendent Vanessa Clark, who I've known for a long time, dear friend, and Pat DeGeorge, and everybody else up here, you know, on the board. I really thank you, and I do appreciate your passion, we share the same passion when it comes to safety and security, so great job you guys are doing, I really appreciate it, and I look forward to what looks in the future.
Thank you, Chief, and likewise, we can say the same, that our working relationship with all of you has been outstanding, you know, even, I'm sure when we get some more comments, that we'll reiterate that again, so, thank you, Mike, Roger, and, yes, we will see you soon. And of course, thank you Charlie for being our most favorite, you know, everything that you did, and you being part of our Alice team was tremendous, and we thank you for that, and we thank you for coming out tonight, so. Okay, lots to look forward to, a lot of new things going on, and I hope every month to be able to present something new that we're doing in Lacey, because that's what we're all about, looking to expand and go from good to great, is one of my favorite books and one of my favorite sayings. So I just want to make some final comments, that summer is not over. In fact, I was at safety specialist, you know, school safety specialist training for four days out in Burlington, and somebody walked in and was complaining about, oh, how summer's almost over, and this gentleman was quick to point out that on that particular day, we had actually reached the midpoint of summer, we just assume that summer's over when school starts, and that's just not the case. Summer doesn't end until September, so while in our minds it ends because school starts, summer is still in full force, and so they say September at the Jersey Shore is the best, and I'm like, of course, and water temperatures are awesome, and less people, the crowds are less, yes. But I do once again have to send a kudos out to our custodial staff for doing the outstanding work that they do to get our buildings ready. I also have to recognize our secretarial staff, a lot of people don't realize that our secretarial staff is not ten months, they work twelve months, and they work very, very hard in accepting phone calls and getting those schedules ready, and a lot of other things that just go unnoticed, but without them, our buildings would just not run as efficiently as they do. So, we look forward to seeing all of you on our teachers on September fourth, and our students on September fifth, and exactly twelve days, and thank you again, Chief, for your presentation, and that, with my presentation, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, so now we are on to public comments. Any hands? Go on now. See you. Have a good night, buddy. Thanks, Ed. I'm Bob Palladino, I'm the retired principal at Fort Kegura School. More recently, I was just elected unanimously with perhaps four votes as the chairperson of the Lacey Education Foundation. So I came tonight to say hello, and I wanted to say congratulations to Dr. Thar, and I'm so happy and proud for you, and I wish you the very best. And I'm so wonderful, it's wonderful to speak before the Board of Education, your contributions and service are honored and appreciated. To see two former students on the board is inspiring to me, and also if I added up your time of service, all of you, to Lacey Township Schools, clearly we're past two or three generations, so I thank you for your service too. I'm very pleased to introduce the Lacey Education Foundation. Not here tonight because she's out of state, it's Donna McAvoy. We have Ron Viava, that's right there. We have Cindy Sabatelli, and Regina Descent. And we've been meeting since, since February, putting this foundation together. I was asked by Mr. Wigley to participate, and I can't say no to Lacey, and then I asked Dr. Thar if I should continue, and she said yes, and I thank you for that. I want to talk about Lacey as a family place, and let me tell you a little bit of my story and how I got here. It's May, the month of May in nineteen sixty-nine, I'm interviewed for a position in Red Bank. The principal who's interviewing me in Red Bank says, there's a place I'd like you to go and stay. So he sent me from Red Bank to Lacey Township, George Mitchell, rest in peace, George, rest in peace. He sent me down to see Dave Elliott, and he was at Fort Kegura School at the time, rest in peace, Dave, awesome. And I left Red Bank, and if you recall, there used to be a payphone opposite Fort Monmouth on the Garden State Parkway, if you remember, and I called my soon-to-be-wife and said, I have no idea where I'm going, but I'm going. So, I get off at exit seventy-four, Lacey Road, I believe, seventy-four, and I'm on this road, one lane in each direction, with sand on the shoulders, it looked like a beach. So I met George, I met Dave Elliott that day, and I got the fifth grade position at Fort Kegura School, and I said, oh, by the way, my wife's a teacher too, my fiancee's a teacher. Linda came down the next day, she got the first grade position, and that's how we came into Lacey. Now, it's funny, he's not in the room now, but the custodian that unlocked this door for us to come in here, and we'll lock it when we leave, was in Linda's first grade class back in nineteen sixty-nine. So when I come here, the sense of community is just so incredible to me, I just can't get over it, I'm so happy to be here. We, Linda and I taught your grandparents, your parents, maybe your great-grandparents too, and it's that legacy of teaching here and working here that is so wonderful, and it continues today with our present staff in every sense of the word. This is an amazing place, yes, every place has problems, every place has issues, and, but we all work to make it better, because it's all about our children, and that's what makes, that's what inspires me about Lacey Township. And the real gift that I find in Lacey Township is that when the staff here in the room, and it happens to me all the time, if someone introduces me, they don't say, he served as principal from these, they say, he's my principal. And I love that possessiveness, and what do I do as a result? I say, you were my student, and it was my pleasure to be a part of your family, so to speak, and to, when your parents said goodbye to you on the school bus, I always wanted them to feel that they were in good hands. So that's my story of Lacey Township, and how important it is to me, and how close I feel, and how grateful I am that I gave my youth to that wonderful mission. So now we have the Lacey Educational Foundation, and we're, we stand here, and we stand with the board and the administration and staff with full support of our students, and what we're doing is we're seeking donations from major corporations and charitable entities, and our goal is to provide components for our students that we can't normally put in their regular school budget, because there are limits. But even more meaningful than going after donations, we need volunteers, we need at least another fifteen people to have us evaluate applications, to bring their expertise. So many of people that would be on that team or went through the school system here, and they know what we need as a former student and parent. But what's also good, people who were outside of the district, you know, when I came from Brooklyn, New York at the time, and found Lacey, you bring your upbringing with you, and you bring some diversity, and that's a valuable thing. So, anyone in the room, or anyone who listens to this on the internet, we welcome volunteers to work for the Lacey Education Foundation. The members here tonight have business cards of where to contact us, to say, hey, I want to be part of this, I want to be part of contributing back to the school district that has been so good to me. Our email address is lacyef2018@gmail.com, that's on the business cards that we have tonight. So I ask the public and any volunteers in this room to join us, to remember us, the great treasure of Lacey Township are our people. And I would tell my staff, and I bet you every principal in this school district says the same thing, I would say to them, teach with your head, but also teach with your heart, and that's what Lacey Township means to me. We're family, and family is forever, so join us in this wonderful opportunity to serve our children. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate all of your efforts, more than you know. We hope it comes to fruition.
Thank you. You're welcome. Is there any way else?
No. Good.
Nate, please don't ask me to stand up, okay?
Did you say, is that joke getting old yet?
Yeah, it is.
Never gets old.
Regina Descent to Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I have a few comments tonight, a couple of things about the agenda, and hello to Dr. Clark, the superintendent, congratulations. It is almost the end of summer, and soon school will start again. I was recently given a great book to read, just published in April of twenty eighteen about fostering student achievement, Let Them Speak by Rebecca Coda and Rick Jetter, and when I'm done with this book, I will pass it along to administration, it's really, really good. I was very happy to see the new officers here tonight, because school security for all six buildings was a topic on the agenda since I was on the board, and I'm happy to see this matter come to fruition tonight, and thank you so much to Chief Devella for all his efforts. I recently earned through an Oprah request that there were no board committee meeting, committee meeting minutes for July and August, because there were no July and August board committee meetings. I know things get busy, and sometimes a meeting or two can slip by. Excuse me here with my technology. Excuse me here with my technology. So a couple of meetings got canceled. Not having policy, finance, and curriculum meetings over the months of July and August leaves the Board only this one night to digest or question anything within what is a very, very lengthy agenda. Just because school is out, it does not mean the Board is on summer break, too. Every Board member has equal power. And some people think the Board president has more power, but what the Board president has is more duties. And one of those duties is to see to it that the Board makes every effort to have their monthly committee meetings. They really shouldn't just slip by. This had happened many years ago, and we don't want to repeat any mistakes of the past. The Lacy School Board functions by committee, not just during the regular monthly meetings. Skipping three meetings so far this year that I'm aware of is not a good thing, so I would ask that you please not skip anymore. While administration can help schedule committee meetings, it really is a Board function. The New Jersey School Board Association highly recommends good Board communication. Talking to each other piecemeal is not always helpful, and I know for a fact that someone is always left out of the loop, and a few times it was me during my term. I used to get a real kick out of it when people would say to me, "I thought you knew." I would eventually find things out. Many times, I was the last to know. Skipping committee meetings is not a good practice. Did anyone on the Board attend delegate assembly this past May 19? I heard no mention of it. After a state budget cut of $583,000, someone on this Board needs to go to Trenton. We don't have a voice if no one attends any state meetings. The next one is scheduled for November 17. Someone really should go, and I would ask that you please put it on your calendars now so that at least you know it's coming up. The delegate does not have to attend, it can be any one Board member. If the delegate cannot go, or the alternate, all the Board president has to do is authorize any other Board member to attend. Two or three Board members can even go to delegate assembly, but only one person can vote. Any county meetings, did anyone from Lacy attend any Ocean County School Board Association meetings? The last one was May 2nd. Did anyone from Lacy go? No. Because they're important, too. I learned about Alice training both at workshop in Atlantic City and at a county meeting presentation. Some of the presentations at county meetings are very worthwhile. I know these meetings outside the district do enable Board members to make useful contacts. Did anyone contact Senator Sweeney's office about the budget cut Lacy experienced? I sent him an email, and I've spoken to his chief of staff. If our legislators don't hear from us, they think the budget cuts are okay. Squeaky wheels get the grease, and in this case, the grease is money, very big money. This district cannot afford to have the state continually cut our annual aid, especially after an approved budget is in place. The Lacy District still suffers terribly from debt service payments, and the 40% debt service that was supposed to be given to the district from the state towards the solar bond payment, it has never been the full 40%. I wonder how many people know that. The Lacy School District is still over $28 million in debt. The credit card is maxed, and then the state pulls the rug out from under. It is so sad to see the S-Rex today on the agenda, sold for $210 tonight. They were supposed to be worth $1,000 each. I'm wondering, did the Board make any attempt this year to do the self-evaluations, either on paper or via the NJSBA system? It should have been done in conjunction with the superintendent review that was due July 1st. And I also was wondering, is the district moving along on time with the NJQSA report, Dr. Clark?
Yes.
That is moving along good. Because we don't want to lose any points just for, you know, not being on time with something so simple as that.
We attended trainings throughout this past summer because QSA is changing.
Right. Now, the people on the Board have required training, and in February, I found an Oprah request to the New Jersey School Board Association on the Oprah Machine website, and it requested transcripts of the Lacy Board members by Mr. Rozi. So I had decided to open them up and read them because one of them was my own, and I found a couple of mistakes on it. It's very important for the Board members to complete their training in a timely manner, and new Board members are supposed to complete a training session prior to participating in a superintendent evaluation process. Year three training is supposed to be a student achievement course, and two people are due for that. And I have to say that over the three years that I went to workshop, there were hardly any other Board members there with me, and a couple that came mostly came for social purposes. I didn't see them in any sessions, except once Mr. Miranda came, and he attended a session back in October 2017. But workshop is a great place to take advantage of the many training sessions offered annually by the New Jersey School Board Association. And the district pays for us to go whether you attend or not. I know people have jobs and people are busy, but we get notice of workshop almost a year in advance. They tell us when the next one's going to be. Even if you can't go the whole three days, it's very worthwhile to just attend even one-day sessions at workshop. And Dr. Clark and I, you know, we ran into each other many times in different sessions. I ran into Mr. Wigley. You know, I know the administrators go, but the Board members need to be in some of the training sessions as well. I know time is a concern for everyone, and people have jobs, but you take an oath of office to become a public servant, please make a commitment to this job, to the voters of this township, and most important, the students you serve. Student achievement is job one, and that can only be accomplished with proper training and commitment. Thank you. Please, we have to do something about Trenton, or we are going to continually lose aid. And if no one goes, and no one says anything, they're just going to continue to take money away from this district.
Regina, I think you're making the assumption of the same.
Excuse me?
I think you're making the assumption of we had a second.
Did you send that letter to Sweeney's office or Governor? Just this year. Well, last year, well, last year at delegate assembly, a resolution was passed for the state not to take any aid away after a budget was passed. And you can see that resolution, the school boards held almost nothing because they went ahead and did it anyway. Again, I was in shock, you know, because here we go, 200 delegates in in a room, we passed a resolution, and no one pays any attention to it. The School Board Association is supposed to have some clout, so we have to keep going. We cannot stop. I mean, we have to be unrelentless with the Governor's office right now. We really do, because things are not going to get better.
The other thing I wanted to mention, too, was your, I've heard this thing about communication a couple times. I feel like I'm going to see it on a science show in a couple weeks. But I just want to let you know, though, that even though we might not have had our committee meetings the past two months, the communication now compared to what it was like when you were here, or what you remember, is a lot different. Everything comes from, it's either coming from the VA or the super to the president to everybody else.
Okay.
There's texts every day, there's emails every day, there's phone calls every day. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. I don't feel that there's any issue with communication as way you said, maybe it was in the past.
Right, but as a member of the public, and when you don't have committee meeting minutes, I can't review them.
I understand that.
That's the thing. You see, this is a public body.
What I'm talking about is communication. You said the Board doesn't communicate. We communicate a lot.
Right, but you have to communicate to the public as well. The only way you can is through Board committee meeting minutes, okay?
It's the only way.
And we're missing three for this year, and it's August. Okay?
Thank you very much. Other comments? All right, thank you very much. Board member comments?
Mr. Riggs?
Well, everybody, I know Vanessa says it's the middle of September, whatever you said, summer's going to go to. We pretty much know it's about done, though, right, guys? June, July, most August are in the rearview mirror. We've got a couple of good weeks left, so let's soak up what we can in the sun and the sand, and we'll see you guys real soon. You know, next time we sit down, it's a whole different deal, you know, school's back in. Hey, congratulations, Lacy, taking on Central. Congratulations, guys. Anybody who was up here, got some big plays. I just want, but I'm sure it was cool.
A lot of bruises. Hurt for you guys afterward.
Chief DeBella, awesome, awesome presentation. Thanks for, thanks for doing everything you do with us. I know Charlie left already, but Charlie keeps us safe day in and day out. The three new Class III officers, they look like fantastic guys. Regina was saying she was happy to see, you know, school safety at the top of the agenda. And that should be at the top of the agenda every month. I mean, you know, we do a lot of things over here, but school safety's got to be right at, if not the top, it's got to be right there. We got to always be thinking about it, but you are doing a fantastic job keeping us safe. Thank you again. Mr. Palladino, nice to see you, like always. I don't know what it is about you, but I was, I was one of those ones that he was the principal, and I remember like it was yesterday, being like a five-year-old kid or whatever you are in school, and he walks in, and the guy looks absolutely unchanged for the last 30-something years. It's pretty amazing, truly. I mean, yeah, he's always been such a cool guy. Best of luck with the Educational Foundation. I hope you get tons of volunteers with that. And as far as, I am the alternate, the state alternate, so I put it down, I wrote November 17, I'll be there. I'll go to Mercer. So anybody who wants to go along for a ride, let's go. But I'll be there for it. I know we missed the other ones, but I don't know who's the primary, but I'll take it. I'll do that one. All right, guys? So we settled that, and I'd say that's about it, so I'll pass it along. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not really going to repeat that much, but dear to my heart, the police department, safety is definitely number one with us, with the kids and the teachers and the rest of the staff. Chief, great job. I know by talking to Superintendent Wigley and Dr. Clark, you are the man, okay? You, this is your number-one responsibility on top of everything else I can do. And it seems like we've got three good guys that are going to come and protect our kids and staff. So keep doing. On top of it once, yes. So keep doing, keep doing. All right? Two, our staff, the groundskeepers and maintenance and stuff like that, a lot of people don't know, but we do have 12-month employees, and even our 10-month employees work somewhat in the summer, too. So thank you, everybody, got the schools ready, the staff, secretaries, administration, and the teachers that are getting ready for the new school year. Education Foundation, that's something that I want to get involved in. I was a little involved in the beginning, but something good, something we need. I talked to a few people that have the foundations with school systems. They raise a lot of money for things that are outside budgets that we need for the kids and for schools, so good luck. And like I said, I'll help you out when I could. And that's about it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Riggs, buddy.
Thank you, President Quill. Just to reiterate what everyone's been saying, Chief, thanks for coming tonight and your presentation. It's nice to see a fellow DeBella guy up there. You got to see him. Another one in the audience there. Besides the safety issues, I want to thank the janitors and custodians. Everyone's been working so hard to get the school district ready for another school year. Crazy. I know the summer officially doesn't end until the 20th of September, but tell the kids that, all right? They will not believe you. So anyway, just looking forward to a great school year. The election ballots are, the people that are running are out. Regina's running again, Rob and I are running, some new faces running. I just want to wish everybody a non-contentions campaign, a friendly campaign, let's keep it friendly.
Stay loving.
I know you will, Regina. But just good luck to everybody. You know what? I think we're all in it for the right reasons. We want to be here for the school district. We want to help the school district. We want to keep things moving positively in the right direction. And you know what? It's nice to see people get involved, some new faces on the ballot this year. And just good luck to everybody, and hopefully, you know, we can all get clean and work the, you know, for, we're all in it together, you know? If you win or lose, I think we all want what's best for the school district and the community. Mr. Palladino, was it? Palladino? Yeah. When you said 1969, you interviewed 1969, I said, "This guy must sleep in a coffin." He must be, he must be a vampire. There's no way this guy would hire in 1969. I'm 50, and you look like you're 55, so I'm thinking 1969, he could be hired at eight years old. Other than that, good luck with the Lacy Foundation. I know Regina worked very hard to get it up and running, and everyone else that worked with her. I know some of the people that you're working with, and they're all fine people. And just like running for Board, just getting involved, trying to keep them moving in a positive direction, it's nice to see you get involved. Welcome back to the education part of the district. Other than that, Vanessa, now, this is your second meeting? Is this your first official meeting? This is your first official, although you did do the last one. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
We all know you'll do a fine job here.
Thank you.
Other than that, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your summer. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, congratulations.
It turned it off.
She's a great, just an awesome human, and I couldn't, no one could have deserved the position more than her, I truly feel. Definitely awesome to have you here. Mr. Palladino, your energy is amazing, you know, like you give off such good vibes, and you're so appreciated, you know, and I love to hear your story. Usually when people come up and talk, for the short time I've been on the Board, we're usually getting viciously attacked, but it was great to hear your positivity, and I hope you know that you're appreciated, you know, like it's just pretty awesome to have people like you out there, and for you to continue to serve and do your part, I think is a great example to not just myself, but to everybody, you know? Chief DeBella, you're the man, bro. You know, we go back, and I know Chief DeBella for a long time, and I can honestly say, like, not just an awesome chief, but just a great, great human being. And, you know, my kids attend this district, and I wouldn't, I trust them here, knowing that he's overlooking everything. And that says a lot, you know, because I don't trust him immediately, but I truly trust him, and I'm thankful for you, and we're all thankful for you. So thank you so much for the work you do. We know you're going above and beyond. The custodians, you're so appreciated as well. It's a thankless job, but we need you just as much as we need everybody. And thank you to everybody here. And I know Dr. Clark is not ready to let go of the summer. For me, summer is 12 months out of the year, so it's no problem, but I hope everybody else enjoys it as well. Thanks. You're down.
President Quill, I'm going to try not to be long-winded, but there's a lot that I think you want to say. First, I'll start off with school security. I think in light of the events of recent years, this Board particularly took great care and put a lot of passion in providing as much security as we can for our staff and students. And, you know, Chief DeBella, you're right, you started at the same time as former Superintendent Wigley, and you guys worked very closely together to help us achieve that mission, and we could not have done it without you, your team, Township Governance, I think Mayor Giuliano and Committee Manquin, all coming together to put forth what we have tonight. Now, Mr. Caputo, retired Tucker and cop, did dawn a Central uniform a few weeks ago when he played, right? I think I recognize him. So I thought he looked familiar, but, you know, when you're up there introducing and giving the background of all these gentlemen, 25, 30 years, law enforcement experience, chiefs, firearms instructors, you know, sheriffs, CIA, we have some of the best, brightest, most accomplished law enforcement professionals supporting our staff and our students. So I don't think anybody could question what this Board has done, working together with our police department to provide safety for our students and our staff. So I thank you very much for that.
So I thank you very much for that. Mr. Palladino and the Lacey Township Education Foundation. So Mr. Elliott was my principal, but after I heard you speak tonight, I feel like you're my principal too. You know, my parents moved down here in nineteen seventy-two, shortly after you got here, and I've been here ever since. And, you know, it's great to see, you're right, that sense of family, that sense of community. I think that's what drew Rob and I here to do this, volunteer, and it's just special. So I would hope that anybody that could come out and volunteer would be a part of that. You mentioned that I would like to maybe do something there as well in the future to get a little less busier. But I think it's a fantastic thing that you're doing, Mr. Biawa, you're part of it, Regina, you're heading it and running it, Donna McBoy, who's not here tonight. It's a great thing that you guys are doing, so we really appreciate it.
We can give you easy things to do.
Did I forget anybody?
We can give you easy things to do.
I'm sure you can give me things to do. I don't know if I got the bandwidth, but I'll give it a shot. Seven hundred, what was it, what'd you say, seven hundred staff, how many square? Sixty thousand square feet of buildings? Six hundred? Fifty thousand square feet. So, you know, custodians and staff, to get these campuses ready for school is an all-in task. So we appreciate everything that you've done throughout the summer. I know we just came from new hire orientation, Lacey here sitting up there, classmate from way back when. It's nice to see all the new staff and teachers that we hired getting ready to come in and make contributions to the district, so good luck. And I think I'm going pretty quick, so I feel like I'm almost done. If I forgot anything, you can... So thank you again, everybody, and enjoy the rest of the summer.
Unfortunately, I get to do a whole lot of repeating than pretty much everybody said. But I wanted to give more points to them. The Class Three officers are huge. I think all together now in what I'll call security, fire folks. That's a lot more than we had a couple of years ago, and all we had was Mr. ...
Bang?
Oh, Garboster Bullock, he was our first guy in here. So, yeah, we had to lose, now we've got five. And the goal is to have six next year, so the following year. If we can fit in the budget, we'll have one officer each school. So thank you very much for working with us, and for portioning it too. I know it's a passion of yours, and we tried to get you everything we could.
Got it done.
Yeah. But yes, also with Mr. Quinn and the mayor too. Huge help, putting the whole thing together for us. We thank all of you guys. Yes, security for anybody that is listening or watching or whatever. Anybody has any questions about security, we'll tell you what we can tell you. We don't wanna let out the whole playbook, but it honestly is, you know, there's one in one A or, I don't know, one in one. I mean, education and safety, those, they go hand in hand. It has to happen. So we're doing everything we can, along with a couple of best of deals and things like that. If anybody has questions about that, feel free to call up and ask. Summer's kinda over. I just wanna say welcome back to all the students in the staff. Everybody say A, yeah? School will start before our next board meeting, so I wanted to say welcome back to everybody. Looking forward to a huge year with academics improving every year, athletics, our clubs, everything. We love to see the kids in here learning and having fun safely. Education Foundation, thank you for coming back, Palladino.
Thank you.
I do remember you from the days, I gotta be honest with you, I looked up to you and I respected you. So thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
I think this is the best cover you've ever had. Especially this piece right here, because we're holding on to the trophy. For those of you that don't know, Vice President Giordano and myself both play the game as well as our board attorney.
And they cry for the next one.
I had to make sure I went to Mr. Morandi's graduation party to ease the pain afterwards.
Their freezer made a lot of money selling ice to the guys. It was a lot of fun.
We did win, so we're up two to one. But that's about all I have, so.
Excuse me, President Claus, before you continue with the rest of the meeting, I have a housekeeping issue I just noticed. You know, I'm very good at proofreading. The resolutions on page one labeled A through B do not match the agenda within. I and B is missing on the agenda unless you wanna move up. Do you have that listed or do it?
Yeah, it's rough, I guess.
You saw it too?
All good.
Okay, all right. Checking it out. Yeah, I don't get, I don't get the agenda three days in advance, so I only have a couple hours to look at it before I get here, so.
Come on, thank you for those. Okay. Onto new business. Can I get a motion for A, new business, one through twenty-six, please?
Second.
Oh, yes, hold on, I'm sorry.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Blast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yeah.
Mr. Silette?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Thank you.
C, programs and curriculum.
Second. Nick and... They're on the order. All right, ready?
Hold.
Mr. Riggs?
We're going on C?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Blast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Silette?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Thank you.
D, professional days and workshops.
Move. Second. Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Blast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Silette?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Thank you.
E, certificate personnel, one through eighteen.
Move. Second. Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Blast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes, congratulations and goodbye.
Mr. Silette? How do I follow that? Yes, welcome aboard. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
And, yeah, so before we move on, I did want to introduce Mr. Joseph Bond, who is here with his wife and his parents. Mr. Joseph Bond is also a graduate of the Lacey Township School District and will be starting as our new Director of Special Services on Tuesday, September fourth. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you to Dr. Clark, thank you to the Board of Education for your support. It's a true honor to accept this position. I have to reiterate Mr. Palladino's words, the sense of family that exists in this town. We're not residents anymore, we had to relocate to evenly split our commute. My wife had an hour and five commute to Edison, and I drove down the road to Lacey Middle School when I was teaching here, so. We live among the county now, but couldn't be more excited to be back to work with the staff, the families, and most of all, the students in this district once again. So I just wanna say thank you to my parents, thank you to my wife.
I know the feeling, man, happens to be one.
She also happens to be expecting our first child, so. A lot of exciting things going on.
Good for you.
Yes.
Welcome aboard, looking forward to working with you. And also, we have another person in the audience with us who was with us at the reception. Lacey Petrick is going to be joining us as our technology teacher facilitator for Lacey Township High School and beyond, so we welcome you as well, and thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Awesome. Sir, F, non-certificated personnel, one through eleven.
Second.
Yes, sir. Hold.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Blast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Silette?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
We, as a matter of fact, we do. We have two walk-on resolutions. Number one is entitled Precision of Student Suspension. Motion is to move that the board rescind the suspension of student ID nine zero three zero nine seven effective Tuesday, September fifth, twenty eighteen. Motion.
Move.
All right. I'll call vote. Mr. Riggs?
Upstate.
Mr. Blast? Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Silette?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Thank you. The second is entitled Precision of Student Suspension slash Out of District Placement. Move that the board rescind the suspension of student ID nine zero three nine nine zero, with the student being transferred to a New Jersey Public School District that is able to accommodate the court-ordered restrictions effective Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand eighteen. Move. Second. Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Blast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Silette?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Thank you. Sir. Move. Second.